Okay, we will call the Finance Committee meeting to order. Uh, Joe Pimonti, we've already heard from, Mike Biskin has been excused, Brenda Sullivan has been excused, so we vote with the County Manager. Um, good night, Mike. Any questions for the County Manager?
What are we doing?
Um, if not, Charlie, real property?
I do have that one resolution, most of the fish I could establish that we're going to talk about.
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, all of our final equalization rates are in, with the exception of the town of North Hudson, they have filed a rate complaint, their tenant equalization rate is 113.36. The State Board is meeting on August 25th to make a decision on that one. Star registration, this, if you remember, is the first year that people who are new homeowners or people who have moved will receive a check instead of a discount on their school tax bill. We had 351 people that would have needed to register by July 1st to receive that check. The State has given a list of people that did register and qualify, and out of that 351, we have 196 that successfully registered and qualified. Um, we're in the process of printing school tax rolls, we received two towns' school tax rates, we're working on that as we speak. Um, we're also going to be hosting a pictometry training, August 23rd, at the Public Safety Building, there's going to be a morning session and an afternoon session. I've sent out an email to all of our current pictometry users, all of you as supervisors, and all of our assessors, if anybody, and the code officers, of course, if anybody has a new code officer that we don't know about, if you can get me the information, then I can also invite them. Pictometry certainly is a very useful tool, um, to the assessors, code officers, and towns. Um, we do have, from the final assessment rule and our second meetings of the Board of Assessment Review, new taxable values, I sent all of those to you as the 2017 budget analysis, so you can see the new taxable values for each of your towns and the line items for your budgets. Um, the county taxable value, I sent to the County Man- County Manager and Linda Wolf, and we're up, with the seven towns that did the reassessment projects and new construction, we're up $89 million in taxable value this year. Um, and we, we do have, I'll be sending you updated budget analysis as we, if we receive any changes to the taxable value, we do have 15 small claims that have been filed and 27 Article Sevens.
I got a question. The towns that we contract with for assessing, we have a challenge here in Article 70, and it ends up in court. Does the town flip that bill?
They do.
Okay. Any questions for Charlie, Roby?
Charlie, um, tried to use Image Mate this weekend. Your site is down?
It is, I've been in contact with the IT department this morning, and they're rebooting the server.
All right, I just wanted you to be aware.
Yep.
Jim?
Charlie, um, pictometry, I agree, it's a very useful tool, but the pictures are from 2010 on it, the images?
They are.
Um, how do we go about updating that? Because I think that would be, I know in our own town, we've had a couple challenges, um, on things, and when we go, we go to pictometry, it shows, uh, no garages, no outbuildings, and when you go and make the, uh, tour, all this other stuff, but according to pictometry, they don't exist.
About half a million dollars.
To update it?
Yeah. Flyovers, they, they run somewhere in that neighborhood, 400,000 or so. Um, we do need to do it again, um, it would be nice if we were able to get some grant funding or something, but, but ultimately, that is a decision the Board will have to make, whether you want to expend that 400,000.
Where did the initial funding come from then?
Well, the first time it came out of Emergency Services Department, um, it was some money that we had available at that time, and we used it for that purpose, it's actually, we've had, this is the second flyover, we've had one before that.
We did.
There was an earlier one done before 2010, um, in, you know, again, it becomes something that the Board will have to decide.
Well, I would think that Emergency Services would want an update, he seems to have a lot of money, because he's constantly spending stuff, so, uh, maybe that's something we can approach him.
Certainly want an update, I don't know if he's got the money, but, you know, we will certainly.
I can tell you for our department that, uh, the guidelines for the cyclical reassessment plan 2017 is the last year that we'll be able to use pictometry at all for the projects. And, um, it's my understanding that, um, they, they can fly parts of the county, maybe do it piecemeal, state land certainly wouldn't need to be flown again, maybe some money could be saved there, state land is never going to change.
Thank you. Any further questions for Charlie? If not, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Biskin is here.
Good morning.
Martin.
Sorry, I'm a little late. I, uh, sent you all the information on sales tax and occupancy and so on, um, I don't know if anybody has any questions on what I sent out, or... Depends on, we look at sales tax a little differently than the State does, um, and I've gone over this a number of times, um, there's three ways we look at it, one, we look at it as cash only basis, where we, what money we receive between January and the end of December is what we share with you all at the towns, that's one figure, and that's the figure I usually give out to you, so you know where we're at with the amount of money we're sharing. There's a sales tax figure that the county uses, and Dan could probably better explain it than I can, that starts March 1st and runs through February 28th, and that's because of a change way back in, Tom was here probably, 1992, and one of our County Managers decided that was a better way to do it, and they picked up 14 months of sales tax, and then...
I don't know, I'm sure I'll get blamed for it if it's that.
You probably voted for it.
Yeah, without a doubt.
But it, it changed, it changed the way we do sales tax, so our State, our, our year as far as budget doesn't always match up with the States', and then there's the States' method, which actually runs from February through January, because they count February money as received in January, so, that's why I've given you different numbers, if you look at State figures, and you hear State figures on the, in the media, they're talking about what they, how they perceive our sales tax collections to be versus what we look at it, so it's a little, it's slightly different. Um, if you look at fuel, motor fuel tax, and, um, I think I sent you all out copies of that, um, we're down about $137,000, I believe it was, uh, let me find S6 in here. Yeah, 100, I'm sorry, 171,000, nearly 172,000 over last year in motor fuels, as we continue to lose money from the cost of gas and other fuels going down, if you, if you take that out of the equation, our sales tax isn't bad, we're, we're running pretty good, we're either even or a little, little above, um, we actually, I believe, would be, um, ahead by about a little over 1%, so taking out motor fuel, we're not in bad shape.
And we actually gained, I mean, the motor fuel, it's pretty much worked itself out, because we also save a tremendous amount of money.
True, right, you save, I mean, when you look at it, I hope, the thought is, we save money here, but you all save money, hopefully you take that money that you saved in gas and spend it for something else that creates sales tax, um, so hopefully it balances out, but looking at, at the loss in sales tax versus the loss in, in motor fuel tax, more of it is lost in fuel than, than what we lose altogether, so we really, at a net, are probably a little ahead in sales tax for the year, working at it. I don't know if anybody has any questions, I don't want to go through, you've got all the numbers there, so I don't need to review them with you. Um, occupancy, we're beginning to see more of the effect of the vacation rentals coming in, we get calls constantly, daily, Wayne Taylor's been doing a great job going out and finding these people and having them contact us, they've been registering, they've been paying, um, people have been very receptive, I haven't had any problems with resistance to it, when people know about it, they say, "What do I have to do?", they send us in the money, they're sending us in their late fees, everything, so, um, we're doing well, and we're showing that we're, we're gaining a little bit on sales tax, our occupancy because of it, actually was up by over, almost $14,000 last month, over last year. Um, I had one request from a, unless anybody has any questions, I'll move on to the rest of it. Um, I had a request from an employee, um, about our deferred comp program to include, um, the ability to, um, use Roth designated contributions, not to the New York, New York State Deferred Comp Program, we can do that through a resolution, I don't know if you want to refer it to the Comp Committee, we do have a committee made up of myself, Monica from Personnel, uh, Tom, and, um, I think it's Ron, his Personnel Chair?
You could.
Yeah, the four of us make up that committee, we can meet and do that, present it back to you, or you can pass it here, they don't find a lot of people doing it, because it's not a real big moneymaker, people, people, they'd do better off going through the straight, straight through deferred comp, but because we had that request, I brought it to the Committee to ask if you want to include the, the ability to do Roth contributions through our deferred comp program.
I don't think it needs to go, any move by Mr. Martin, or Second, Mr. Paston, Mr. Dono, Mr. Dono, whatever, I'll favor.
Aye, aye.
Oh, very.
Once we get the final resolution, I just have to notify deferred comp, and they'll add it to our portfolio, and then anybody can use it. Um, I do have one thing that I, I added after I went through the resolution, or through the agenda, McKin across this, um, through some notifications I got from some other treasurers, there was a, a bill, or a law passed recently, um, maybe you're all aware of it, I just became aware of it, um, on the real property actions and proceedings law, takes care of these zombie properties that are out there, um, you've been hearing about it, and you, the towns now have the ability to go after them through these abandoned properties, and there's, there's a section of law, Article 19A and that, um, if you haven't seen it, take a look at it, look it through your county attorney's and...
We've been working, we started here then already.
You have, good, okay, I just want to make everybody aware of it.
Not only it's, it's the properties that are limbo, also, there's...
Right.
Once the bank starts that foreclosure proceeding, they're responsible.
Well, actually, they don't even have to start the foreclosure proceedings now, if you read the law, you can start it before, before you had to wait to go after them until after they started the foreclosure, that's why the banks were dragging their heels and starting their foreclosure, so you wouldn't go after them, now if it's abandoned, it's more than three months late and rent and so on, or paying them payments, you can go after the mortgage company to make, maintain that property and take care of it, even before they start the foreclosure proceedings, so, just, just want to bring that up to everybody.
So, I, when can you go after them? What, what is the...
I can give you a copy of the law, Roby, if you have a...
Yeah, what's the key date? Because I've got a couple.
I understood as if, if it was in, if they started, what do they call that, the legal lesspendants?
Lispendants, yeah.
Lispendants?
Yeah.
Once it hits that stage, they become responsible for that property.
Okay, so, if they're not maintaining it, the bank?
Correct, yeah.
You know, I've, I've got a couple that have been sitting for three years in the grasses, three feet high.
I, I can give you copies of the, I've made copies of the law, I refer you to it every time, and then you take a look at it.
Yeah, but what can we do?
You could, you contact the, what we do is, we contact the bank, whoever owns the mortgage, we tell them the condition of the property, we send them a follow-up letter from the Code Of Orders Officer, they've been good about coming in, cleaning the property up, but what I also noticed they're doing now, because of this new legislation, our properties that are in foreclosure have already been fore, they're unmarked.
They're moving them quickly.
They're moving a lot, so if you have $150,000 owed to the bank, they're letting them go for 75 grand, I mean, they're putting them out there, they don't want to own, period, so they're just, they're getting, they're unmarked.
They, they also are required to not only maintain them, but to sture them, in the sense that they're locked, boarded up, and so on, so, um, you know, people aren't breaking into them, there's part of this law that, that includes a, a section, if there is damage to the property, where someone takes, you know, tries to destroy it by pulling all the copper pipe and all that out, there's a section of law that covers that for those people that are trying to, trying to destroy the property in that sense, um, it's, it's a good law, it just got passed, and I just want to point it out to everybody.
Could you send that to everybody, please?
Yeah, I'll send you a link to look for it, and then you can read it yourself, or you, you know, because the law is, it's kind of lengthy, but I'll give you a, a link to it, or send the actual thing out.
I imagine the same would hold true for the county on a lot of these properties, once we foreclose.
Possibly, but...
But seriously, I mean, what's, if, if, if we foreclose on a piece of property, then it's going to become our responsibility to go in there and do something with this property.
Yes.
Mr. Warren. Just wanted to recognize you for your voice of reason. I won't mention the property, but maybe somebody understands what I'm saying, they used to ride horses, or...
Many other things.
I'm surprised that the county, or any governmental body, would be held accountable under that law, I can understand a private, private entity, but I, I'm going to, I'm going to be surprised if it, if it, if it addresses a municipality or county ownership. I, I don't, I can, I find it hard to believe that that law...
I haven't read the whole law, but maybe, right?
It's the same as zoning, um, you know, municipalities, governments are not held accountable to local zoning, and I got to believe that that's the same under that law, but I'm not sure, now, banks, that's a different entity, it's a private organization, so...
I haven't read the whole law, so maybe I really won't be...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm just telling everybody, don't, I don't know if that's accurate.
One thing that I do want to bring up, and Joe, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I did read it in the song, where your town board decided you're going to go in and clean up properties, and your attorney said that they're going to re-levee it on the taxes, you know, we've had that discussion here, and you and I talked about it, and Warren County is having that discussion right now, and what Warren County, I think the solution that they came to, they will do a re-levee, but any costs that a town has incurred in having a property cleaned up, if, if the county goes in and ends up foreclosing, they will not reimburse the community, and rightfully so, those expenses for that cleanup, they'll reimburse them for water, sewer, back taxes, but not the cleanup. We've had this discussion before, where Dan Manning had informed the Board that we could not do that in this county, I don't know whether we can, I think it would be a great tool to have, but every town and village would have to realize that, you know, if that house is foreclosed, or not even if it's foreclosed, when that property tax bill comes back, if it's re-levee, the county is not going to reimburse you for the cost of that cleanup, that's something you're going to have to go after the owner.
Water and sewer, we can re-levee, it's...
No, water and sewer, but I was saying, out of property, if we go in and take a place down, the town spends $25,000, and those taxes are re-levee, we put it on their tax bill, the county's not going to re-levee, not going to give Mariah...
Even mowing the lawn, or cutting the grass and paying for it, any, anything to do with it is not reimbursable.
All that's...
I believe that, I believe there was an agreement in, in that letter, correct me if I'm wrong, that said that if, if we sold the property at auction, and we made any money on it, we would attempt to reimburse the town at that point from the money, and that may be something that's allowable, but we haven't gone that far with it, with it foreclosed, but we, we can see that if that works, but I believe that was in there.
I do, I do think we need to have discussion on that once again.
Yeah.
Charlie?
Mr. Gus, uh, I have the same scenario in St. Armin right now, which Mike can test too, all right? This property is privately owned, and, uh, there hasn't been any, hasn't been any taxes paid on it, and it's becoming a disaster area, what the homeowner did was, it went in, knocked the house down, what have you, took anything that value out of it, and moved to Plattsburgh, and now, because of it becoming to the end where the county is going to step in on it as far as the tax base charges, they are now starting to take in, such as this weekend, they dumped garbage, tires, rims, and even the entire vehicle in the yard.
It's, you know, every one of us deal with these issues.
Yeah.
Which probably the exception of North Hudson, because they got the perfect town, but anyway, we all, and our constituents get upset, but the, but the reality of it is, and I've been through it, they are very expensive prosecuting court, they, I mean, we've got one property in Mariah, this, there's three different state agencies in there after this stuff, and still others happen, you've got BMV, the EDC, and the APA, um, so I don't, I mean, I don't have a solution to the problem, all I know is that towns can end up spending tens of thousands of dollars trying to get a property cleaned up, and, uh, yes, it's super expensive.
Even if we were to go in and clean up the property, what that property would sell for is not even close, okay, to what it's worth.
Is it in the Hamlet?
It's right in the township, or in the community of Bloomingdale, yes, in the Hamlet.
I mean, I don't, and I don't have an answer, all I know is it's very expensive to get these properties cleaned up, but I will say for the record that I don't believe that the State does enough to help communities, especially here in the Adirondacks, where you would think they'd want to be here helping us, because you read the Times Union, they're, they're dumping all kinds of money into Troy and these other areas to clean up these blight neighborhoods, but we get nothing up here, which I might understand, but it's a problem, it's an issue, and every, every town has a problem. Mike's going to come up with an answer for us at some point. Mike, do you speak to the auction?
Yeah, I can let you know where we're at with it, um, we have to opt out August 31st to continue to allow them to pay, and once we do that, um, as I said, we will shortly after August 31st, we'll, we'll post the properties within the next couple of weeks, and by posting it, what I mean by that is, those properties that we couldn't find owners for, we need to put a sign on the property, letting them know that still, because we, we weren't able to find a, a good address to notify the owner, we have to put a notice on the property telling them we're going to foreclose. Um, after August 31st, we, we can move forward from there for a judgment, the county court, um, once, once we have that in hand, we can set a date, I'm looking at probably the end of October, somewhere where we were last year, I know that I talked to the auction company, they threw me out a date of October 26th as a, a date they had available, so we're looking at somewhere in that, that range of when we'll do them. I don't know if 26th is exactly the date we're going to use, but somewhere around there.
Well, we were, uh, was going to bring this up at the end of the meeting, but I'll bring it up now, seeing as how it was, the subject just came up, um, we had a meeting last week with all the entities, and it was felt, at least my feeling, with the majority at that meeting, is that we would move forward, go out to RFP to hire a company to come in and do the title searches, um, I don't think there's, uh, we should be asking this of the county clerk, because it got so far behind, and it was no fault of theirs, so, at this point, I'd like to move a resolution that we solicit RFPs to get caught up on the title searches, and, so solicit and award.
Randy, that'll be for 13, 14, and 15?
Correct.
Right, the 15s, they, they will have to wait till October, but I would assume during the RFP process, getting it out, getting it awarded and so on, will be in that range anyway, so...
And that will get us caught up.
Yeah, that would get us caught up.
And we need to get caught up.
We will file the 16s, the foreclosure, or the beginning of the foreclosure process for the 16s, the current year, we file November 1st, and those can be searched right away, as soon as they get them, that means next October, October of 17, provided those searches are done, by then we can move right away, and that's where we would, should be at.
For the Second, move by Dylan, here now. Uh, Mr. Farby, you have a question?
In the, uh, RFP, I'd like to know how quickly that can be done by an outside firm, can you ask that question within, you know, to get a timeline on how long it'll take them?
Sure, we can, within the RFP, Linda and I talked about this, we talked with Mike, um, we're probably looking like six months, um, given the number of properties that you're looking at.
If I can make a suggestion, and this may be something we can do, maybe not, but depending on how the RFPs come in, if they're very similar, can we split some of these? And, because there's more than one abstract company out there.
Yeah.
It's possible, you know, if they're within reason, or the same, that we could, could we split it?
Yeah, I think...
And award it to two different companies, and have them get it done a little quicker? If you give one year to one, one year to another, two or three of them, and maybe give each one...
We potentially could do that, or we could, um, we also could bid them out, um...
A year at a time?
By year, by year, potentially. Um, Mike and I talked about this in terms of, um, you know, getting ready for a sale, um, I'm not, nor do I think Mike is actually convinced that a larger sale is a better sale, um, I think there tends to be a certain amount of people that show up for a tax sale, and if you go back and check after the start of that tax sale, um, usually by the afternoon, most people are gone, they, they've spent their money and they left, so I'm not certain that, that running maybe 13, um, if we could run 12 and 13 together, and then run 14 and 15 together, I think that makes a good sale size in terms of, of what we would be looking for, so, I think that's something we should be looking at as well.
If we, if I can, if I could just interject a minute, if we decide to do the 13 and 14 and 15 together in one, in one year, my suggestion would be we do a two-day sale, split the county in half, and do half of the, because we, we always start with Chesterfield and then with, with Wilmington or Willesboro, or, we, if we could split this in half and do half the towns one day, and the other half the other day, I think that you get the crowds, that's what we did before, when we did a very large two-day sale, because what happens is, the people that are interested in the property, and Jay, when they buy that property, they're gone, they leave, people that are interested in the Wilmington property aren't going to come until later in the day, because they're not going to sit through the whole auction, so it's, it's, we can discuss the logistics of how we're going to do it, once we see how many we have.
What I've observed at these sales is that most people that are there, ninety-five, they're there for a specific piece of property.
Yes.
They're not there to, you know, speculate.
Right.
Okay, I got people waiting, so, Mr. Farby, Mr. Farby, you had your hand...
Yeah, just, uh, Dan, if you could just touch on hiring an outdoor side firm, what that would do to the anticipated revenue that Joe has in his budget?
At this point, at this point, it would do nothing to the revenue that Joe has anticipated for, but, what Joe does is, within the county clerk's office, they anticipate $150 per parcel for tax search, that amount gets added to the property when it goes for sale, um, that becomes a revenue for the county clerk's office, regardless of whether we, Joe does the search, um, right now, that revenue is slated to go into the county clerk's department, I have no intention of changing that, so, even if you did the sale, had someone else do the title search, you did the sale, the revenue would still come back to Joe's department. In terms of the, um, work that's actually would occur in Joe's department, I don't see really any difference, the difference in terms of workload is really going to be in the year in which he's working on, instead of working on 13 and 14s, he would be in November starting 16s instead, um, so we would essentially remove that 13, 14, 15 block, get those done, his work starting in November would go back to the 16s, so then we would be getting ahead of ourselves in terms of getting ready for the 2017 sale that would, that would occur after that, so, no, I do not have any intention of changing the revenue source that's identified within the county clerk's office, there, I don't know exactly what it will take to get a 13, 14, 15 title searches done, um, we will after the RFP process that occurs, um, once, once we figure that out, we can determine how much the revenue, how much additional money we need to allocate towards this in order to get these caught up, but...
Well, this isn't going to force anybody out.
There's no, absolutely no reason, because the work doesn't change, the work changes from, instead of doing 13, you're going to be working on 16, but you're still going to be working on tax searches, so, the person that he has allocated to doing that will, will be working on the later year as opposed to a previous year, so...
I got you all, you all here, yeah. And then your hand, uh, shot.
I would just, as a mention, I, I think one of the advantages of, of us getting caught up in one year, even though you may go to, to a, uh, auction, is, is I think if, we need to change the expectations, uh, of property owners of what the impact of not paying taxes is, and, and doing it all on, so getting caught up in one year like that, showing a major impact, the efficiency of the county, you know, of, of track is, is vastly improved, uh, they send a message, and will, you know, maybe lower the, uh, you know, the, the loss of revenue, people continue to pay taxes, you know, pay taxes year after year.
Mr. Tyler? So the money to pay for the RFP would come out of the county clerk's budget?
No, at this point, I don't, it would probably come out of unbalance, once we determine the total amount to...
the total amount to.
So then the money made would go back to them?
Yeah. It's, it's a revenue source that's gotta come into the county somewheres.
Right.
Right now, it's identified within the county clerk's budget. I don't have any intention of changing that at this point, it would still remain as a revenue source for there. Because again, his tax search responsibilities are not going to end, they're simply gonna change focus. They're not gonna be 13s, they're gonna be 16s instead. So in terms of the revenue, the revenue's gonna come back there. Now, I don't know what the per parcel cost will be to hire somebody to do them, but once I know that, I can tell you where the additional money needs to come from. In the long run, you can say that while if there's additional money made in the sale, you can always allocate it back for this kind of cost. But in the short term, when you're paying contractor, you gotta come up with some money, so in all likelihood, we would take that out of fund balance and just go ahead and proceed under that basis. And then, again, whatever revenue comes from the sale would go back to.
Dan, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we make, if we make over and above the taxes, it's gonna go in fund balance anyways.
Right.
So.
If we sell, if we sell all the properties and it turns out that we made more than what the taxes were owed, then that money goes back to fund balance anyways.
Mr. Moore?
First off, I agree with what Sean said, getting everything back will send a message, but if we did the tax sale for 13, or 12, 13, 14, and 15, if we did one in April and turn around did one in July, do 12, 13, then 14, 15, would, that would lessen the number of properties we had, and it might bring people back the second time, that's a possibility.
Joe, that's all I think, we can, once we get these searches, we know what we're doing, I think that's a discussion we, we probably ought to come back and revisit here and decide which way we wanna approach it.
And my other question, given the conversation that led up to this, does the, will the abstract company have everything they need to proceed with those searches? Because I was under the impression that there was a process, and that the process has to be a certain way before those title searches can be done. So my question is, is if we bring them in, are they gonna have everything they need to proceed?
Well, they do, they do, the abstracters do title searches now, and they have access to all that same information. Tax search is very similar to what they do on a daily basis, and they have access, so I don't see any, I don't see any difference in what access they're gonna have.
I mean, when we're really talking about the process, the most critical thing you have to remember in the process is that the title searches have to be done first. Not, no other step within the process occurs until the title searches are completed.
I understand that, but through that conversation that we had, the impression that I walked away with was that there was some parts of that process that weren't completed, which was delaying the title search.
I don't think it delayed the title searches. It does, there are some number of things that can occur, in terms of the posting and finding an owner and all those kinds of things, that does delay the overall process. But the title search process is pretty simple. If you don't pay your taxes, you end up on that list, and the county clerk starts a title search on you. That, that title search then becomes a chargeable item under your recovery of that property, which is $150 fee.
One thing I do wanna clarify for you, this is a tax search versus a title search, it's a little different, and it's not, it's not as involved as a full-blown title search, which can go back 40 years in some cases. And we're just looking for lien holders and owners who need to be notified, and so it's, it's a little bit of lesser property, and all the access they have for title search now ought to be, should be available for tax search. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't be. One other thing, and I do, I don't wanna belabor the point, but we talked about the benefit of the, of getting these caught up, and the taxpayers know that they're gonna be, their feet are gonna be held to the fire to do this. It's gonna be an advantage to my office too, because we very often get phone calls and they haven't paid their 14 taxes, and they say, "When are you gonna foreclose on my property?" We really can't give them a good answer now, because we don't know. You know, once this is done and we know what's going on, we can say to them, "In October of, or January of 18, your 16 property is up for sale." We'll be able to give them better answers, and I think that'll be more helpful to not only us, but the taxpayers. Now, we have to say, "Well, you're eligible for foreclosure, but we haven't done the search yet, so we can't give you a definite date." We will be able to give them definite dates in the future, and that's what happens with most, most counties. People know that after the end of two years, they're in trouble.
Any further discussion? Mr. Moore?
I think you all know that I'm generally not able to work on the outside that we can accomplish on the inside. I don't have a problem personally with going out to RFP, find out what it's gonna cost, but I'd rather see that resolution amended, so that it doesn't use the award, the award word, so that we can review the cost of what it's gonna be. I mean, if you look back, we had our first auction, I think, in eight years maybe, or nine, in 2013. We've done five, six, seven, eight, and nine, and 10, and are about to do 11. If, if our offices and, and at the town clerks can do 12 and 13 this year, we could be doing those next year at this time, during which he could be doing 14 and 15, and he could do 14 and 15 the following year, or maybe even later in 17, without having to go out to, and we would be caught up at that point, and we could do two every year from there on, maybe, or whatever it works out. So, yeah, all of a sudden, it's, you know, it just doesn't seem that right to me that without looking at what the cost is going to be, if it's gonna be 40, 50,000, or whatever it might be, that we do that without knowing what that cost is and say we're gonna award it, when possibly, and I'm not sure where that, if that's where the big holdup is, I mean, there's a whole process, as Dan just pointed out, whether it's the postings or finding somebody, or whatever it might be. I'm not convinced that if we do hire it out, and we get 12, or 13, 14, and 15, and here that we're gonna be able to do them in the same timeframe that we think. So I would like to see it amended, and again, if our people can do it, and I don't care what department it is, if our people can do the work, we're already paying them, why would we wanna spend $50,000, or whatever this cost might be, when our people can do it?
With all due respect to my colleague, I've been here nine years, and I've heard for nine years, we're going to get caught up. I think nine years is, is long enough. People don't pay their taxes based upon, they know we don't have a sale. We've got, I got blighted buildings in my community, I'm sure they're in everybody's communities. It's time to bite the bullet, get caught up on this, and then move forward from there. I understand and respect Mr. Moore's opinion on it, but I've sat here for nine years, and we have kicked this thing around, and we're gonna get, and it never happened. It's time to do this. I'm sure that I know Mr. Palmer well enough, that if it is something that is totally astronomical, he's gonna come back to this port before he does anything. He'll keep us informed every step of the way. I just think we've, we've put this off so many times, and this one can do, and it doesn't happen. And it's, again, this is no negativity toward the county clerk's office, I think we're just asking way too much of them. They're not responsible for this process getting behind the years that it is, but after I've been here for nine years, and I've got these blighted buildings in, in my town, that it's time to get this done and get caught up and move forward. Thank you.
Mr. Pallidi?
Was there a committee meeting on this?
Yeah.
So who's the chairman of the committee?
I guess.
What's the recommendation of the committee?
That we go RFPs, we cut them.
All right, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, all in favor? All right. Opposed? Mr. Moore's opposed. There. Okay, anything else, Mike?
Oh, no, I have.
No, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, Mike, before you leave, just like to bring forward and note that during the July meeting of the Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers, that Mr. Diskins received the Victor E. Martinelli Outstanding County Treasurers Award by the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers. Congratulations, Mr. Diskin.
Thanks, and I just wanna say that I appreciate this board and previous boards supporting what I was doing. When this started in 2002, you all, you or your predecessors were very supportive of my efforts, and I let you know that this is what I wanted to do. I never wanted to go to this point where I got to this high of an award. I never anticipated this, and it wasn't on my bucket list. I thought my bucket list was pretty well done when I became president of NACCO, but I appreciate the fact that this board has supported my efforts, and you've done part of it as they went along. I know that when Randy Douglas was here, he traveled to, to Fort Worth to support me down there. And the nice part about this award is, it doesn't come from your peers, it isn't something you do as a popularity contest, it comes from a national panel of judges, so they judge you on what they see written down about you, and what the awards are, so it's a little special when you get something like that.
Who's Martinelli?
Victor Martinelli was a, was a treasurer back in the 70s in Old Town in Ohio, or county in Ohio, who was instrumental in starting the association. Few years ago, they thought about changing the name, because nobody knew who Victor Martinelli is, and no one wanted to really change it, so it's just stuck, it's, maybe they'll change, somebody asked me if they were gonna change it to the Michael Diskin Award, and I said, "I hope for God that they don't do that." Maybe in 20 years, they can do that after him, oh God, but.
Good name, it's Italian, leave it alone.
By the way, Mr. Martinelli's daughter comes every year to these awards, and is part of the ceremony, she's, she's a very nice lady.
All right, very, congratulations, I'm sure Bill will have a plaque for you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Diskin? Charlie?
No questions for Mr. Diskin.
Thank you, Mike. Charlie?
You, we received communication from Mike Pascarias this morning in regards to the Fish Hatchery asbestos abatement. This communication is a clarifying communication whereby it demonstrates that all of the asbestos removal will be a total of $48,390. It had been interpreted by some that this $48,000 was only going to cover the residents. That is not the case. Now, members of planning, DPW, engineering, and myself met at the Fish Hatchery last week, and, or this week, and we, we see that nothing is going to happen at the Fish Hatchery until this is clarified and all of the asbestos removed. The board of supervisors have been, have an attitude that we do need to invest in the Fish Hatchery, and the only way that we can is we have to resolve the issues concerning asbestos. As a result of that, I'm asking that Finance Committee reintroduce resolution in regards to the Fish Hatchery abatement, by whatever process you have to do. I am not on the finance.
Someone wanna, and there is $50,000 budgeted for this purpose.
Well, there's, there's money in the Fish Hatchery.
Money in the Fish Hatchery. Someone wanna move this? Moved by Mr. Gillen, second by Mr. Moore.
Let me just put the resolution. All right. So the resolution moved the authorization, the award of asbestos abatement and building demolition at the S.S. County Fish Hatchery to Burke excavation in the total amount of $48,390. The work includes the modeling, which is set up in mobilization of $8,200. Demolition and removal of the residence itself, it's cheaper to actually tear down and remove the whole building than it is to try to remove the asbestos. That gets rid of the building in totality, that's $16,970. Asbestos removal in the garage of $5,500, asbestos removal in the old barn of $600. Asbestos removal in what's referred to as the old building is $6,220. And asbestos removal in what's referred to as the bathroom in the feed room, which was $10,900, for a total of $48,390. That's the resolution.
Okay, any discussion? Just on the discussion, the contractor is, I just, again, Burke, I just, I read an article in the Times Union where they had hired a contractor, boy, their place found, the asbestos became airborne or something, and now the municipality is being sued because the firm they had one there to tear it down, well, that was a chill, so.
Nobody gets a contractor out here unless they're properly insured.
They were insured or not.
Yeah, but Mr. Manning's pretty careful about, like, insurance.
Mr. Marahue?
Just an explanation, and the alternate, the adder, delete, the lump sum?
White?
We're just not following that. Mine is 13.5, the other's 27.
Right, the 27 would have been if they went in, that's the bid under the, this is from OpTech.
Yeah, that was from OpTech. The 13,000 is if they don't, it would cost $13,600 more if they just removed the asbestos from the old building. It's $16,000 total if they just tear the old building down. So that's the deduct. So in other words, we're gonna say to them, "No, don't go in and take the asbestos out, just tear the building down and take it away." And it's actually $16,900 to do that. It would have been the $30,000 if they in fact had to go in and clean out every one of those things. You'll see on the list, it shows the black mastic associated with the door thresholds. All of those things are items that would have cost $30,570 to remove if we asked them to go in and remove the asbestos in the old building. If they in fact just tear it down and haul it away, we get a deduct of $13,600, which leaves a total of $16,000 to do that.
Thank you. Okay, further discussion? Mr. Moore?
This doesn't have anything to do with the bid, but in reading the email that came across, the building that's being built back there on site, who's paying for that building?
Town of Crown Point.
The Town of Crown Point is gonna build the whole building?
Yep.
And then turn it over to the county to maintain?
There's gonna be some kind of a lease agreement that worked out or in a municipal agreement, that would be worked out, where we would get use of the space within there for the bathroom, and the showroom for the Fish Hatchery, things. That's all gonna be covered by Grant through the Town of Crown Point.
Okay, so we, will we be maintaining the water portion where they're, I'm suing their water controls are gonna be there in the new building?
That would, that would have to be worked out in an intermunicipal agreement. We talked with Dan about this, about working out an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Crown Point. They would be responsible for their own maintenance of the water system, we'd be responsible for our sections of the building.
Thank you.
Also, we're under the gun for consolidation of services, and this is an example of, of shared services, where both the county and the town benefit.
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, this, you know, what we've been talking about down at the Fish Hatcheries is building something that, number one, we needed to have some kind of bathrooms. Number two, we wanted to be able to get the public back there to visit. We're gonna be able to accomplish this, and we're gonna be able to do it at a very reasonable cost.
Any further discussion on the resolution? All in favor? All opposed?
I'm opposed.
Down?
I'm opposed. Thank you.
Okay, anything further, Dan?
I don't.
It's just my impression. Dan Mann?
I have nothing. I apologize for not being here, I was over. Arden motion on the Cindy Brazey case.
Oh, you do?
We'll see.
Anything further to come before this committee? Mr. Gillen?
Well, this, not necessarily this committee, but I wanna thank all supervisors, came out for the dunk tank, you know, brave and up there, and even if you showed up and the dunk tank wasn't ready, I appreciate you still coming out. I also would like to recognize two supervisors that spilled their own blood in service to the county and to the board of supervisors in the dunk tank. I think Mr. Tyler and Mr. Marnell deserve a hand, they, they were wounded in action in, in getting, under fire. They cut their toes. They cut their toes.
I would say, wise, I'd like to recognize the new milk contestant, one hands down, Mr. Marnell beat Mr. Gardner pretty easily.
Oh, he did, that's true. That is true. Quite enough.
Anything else?
I do have a recommendation, Sean. I understand that next year, if you have the dunking booth, if you want big fish, you need a bigger tank.
Anything further to come before this committee?